I'm sorry, Tanvi Chek. Dorothy Clay, Aurora Tanada, William Reeves. This is the next to the last panel of women's. Tanvi Chek.
My name is Tanvi Chek. I'm deserving and going for the Transgender Justice Project. I also identify as transgender, which for me means that I don't sign legal at work, and I identify as a masculine gender identity. I do see improvements. As part of my job as Transgender Justice Project, I assist trans and gender responsible residents of the community legally change their name and administratively change their gender markers by holding a monthly connect at the day. We have been doing this project for over five years and have assisted hundreds of trans and gender responsible residents. As we know, transgender people and particularly transgender women of color are police and profile their disproportionately. Called walking by trans, this issue is so prevalent that our own CPD general order regarding the search and detention of trans people specifically states that a police officer's reasonable suspicion cannot be based solely on someone's gender identity. We need to stop profiling transgender people and particularly transgender women of color from accessing public accommodations in Chicago. Further, there are many barriers to changing my medical documents. Each administration has its own requirements for how someone changes their sex designation on their state ID. The standard for the DME is different than the standard for a passport and so on. Multiple different types of documentations are required to change different documents, and all of them require access to gender information and our healthcare as a medical provider will have to recommend the gender change, which often means access to a provider of your own choosing. Lot of people for various reasons don't have access to these documents or don't have resources to obtain these documentations. Additionally, many people may not wish to change their ID for multiple reasons, including family privacy, fear of backlash, issues with selective service registration, problems with private health insurance companies and medical providers, the prostitution screening not being covered for trans women, and loss of coverage for a kind of logical care for trans men. This amendment is necessary and would go along in protecting the transgender community, particularly gender responsible people, trans women, and people of color from discrimination and public accommodations. I'm proud to be here in support of the proposed amendment and God Mayor Manu and the LGBT Caucus for their efforts to strengthen the protections offered under the Chicago Human Rights Ordinance. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Dorothy Clay.
Thank you. I'm Dorothy Clay, and I've been told you just asked me whether I'm going to be reading comments. I want to say I hold due respect to my transgender brothers and sisters, my gay brothers and sisters, and my straight brothers and sisters that are here today to just voice a few concerns and comments for the safety, particularly of our children, and not just, let's say, straight children, transgender children as well. I have some concerns for the putting together of males and female bathroom, you know. I have listed here some instances where there have been violations. This is one man claiming to be transgender, allegedly, showed an eight-year-old child until she passed out, claiming to be transgender. The mother heard the child screaming with English. In Georgia, the ACLU director resigned from this transgender agenda because her children were frightened by three bills in the female bathroom. A man in women's clothing video taped hours of women in the bathroom. In Ventura City, convicted serial child rapeers previously raped two girls engaged in identity expression and gender identity claiming to be a female in a female's bathroom frightened women. So there are recorded instances of people posing as transgender individuals going to the restrooms, not just violating the privacy of our children and women and men, but they're also endangering our children. I'm the mother of three, grandmother of five, great-grandmother of three. Something that gives me, you know, experience enough to say that to put a man in a female bathroom is not, again, just a violation of privacy, it's just that I'm quite crazy. Let's use some common sense, please. Committee members, every time there's an instance of one of these situations in which your child is abused, raped, or frightened, you're responsible. You're responsible. Okay? I could not not come here today and not voice my concerns. I'm not judging anybody. I couldn't if I wanted to. But I could not not come and voice my concerns. Let's just please use common sense. We're going to put and grow a man in the bathroom with a child, a female child. Our predators, our central predators, will use this as an opportunity to do what they want to do. Okay? So please, let's just keep our children safe, our transgender, transgender males and females safe. Keep the women safe. And let me just say something else too, because I heard a woman speak about her transgender child again. You know, that messer, you know, he's tough raising children, I know. But, state of fact, the Nazis were the first to experiment with sex change, experimentation with children. The Nazis, sex change operations, it's now called transgender children. There's no such thing as a transgender child. Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Chek. Aurora Tanada.
Hi, my name is Aurora Tanada, and before anything, I'd like to thank you for giving me this time to talk. This is, I think, the subject that I talk quite a bit with my coworkers, family, friends, and people that I really don't know who always question my gender. And it's interesting that you bring up the children. I am a daughter, I am an aunt, I am a mother, all of the above. I just happen to dress in men's clothing. I do get questioned a lot when I go to the bathroom. I've been asked to step out of the women's locker room even after I've showed them my breasts and my genitalia without saying the other words that might be offensive to you guys. So this is a very, I think this is a subject that I think I've been waiting to talk about quite a bit. You'd be surprised, children, how accepting they are once they realize how you identify and how you are as a person. I think that people tend to say that there's dangers with trans going into bathrooms and so forth. How about the dangers we face? And maybe not conforming, because I am. I identify as a woman, but I am not conforming because I do not dress the way a woman is told that she should be dressed like, because I step away out of those norms. And then you're uncomfortable with me going to that bathroom because I portray something that you think I am. I just want to go pee. That's all I want to do. I want to go pee. I want to go in without being harassed, without being followed, and without being questioned. And the other thing that I want to point out, I'm also a caregiver of a 31-year-old transgender brother. And so, imagine that, having to go into a bathroom with my brother, myself, and my son, and being told that I can't go in the bathroom because there's no family bathrooms available. You know what? I grew up in 26th Street, so I went through tough, and I worked to be tough. And I always have to come in with that toughness every time. I'm put in that challenge every day when I'm dealing with both my son and my brother. So what I'm saying is that it's about times happens. Because you know what? I want other people like me not being able to have an additional thing to be harassed about, to prove ourselves who we are. I just want to go to the bathroom. I just want to be able to not have my son witness me being harassed by other people in the community for who I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, William Reeves.
Good morning. My name is William Reeves. I have come to testify in favor of the work of this provision of the ordinance, and I am here to provide some historical perspective of why this provision is in the ordinance as it is now. Can you hear me now? As the city of Chicago was late to the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender communities, and Mayor Daley was late to the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender communities from 2000 through 2011, I was the person who spearheaded the passage of the 2002 Gender Identity Ordinance, which added gender identity to the Human Rights Ordinance. In fact, it advocated for the passage of the ordinance from 2000 through 2002. Well, let me back up a second. First of all, as originally proposed in 1999, the Gender Identity Ordinance did not include the provision of what you're discussing today. Consequently, as you can see from discussions today, and casual white surprise from current national debate, every discussion of the city official, every discussion, pardon me, with city officials and members of the public about the proposed ordinance devolved into a discussion of the bathroom. In fact, it became the predominant theme of all the discussions. In 2002, at the request of constituents, including Rick Narcia, who was here earlier, then Alderman Schiller resolved to gain passage of the ordinance, but the bathroom issue was still stood in the way. Alderman Schiller asked me to find a resolution to that issue, so I had asked Heather Sawyer of Landa Legal to provide language that might need city council approval. She suggested the cited provision, which in turn was approved by the transgender individuals and transgender organizations who were advocating for passage of the ordinance, some of whom were attorneys. The language of the provision was so broad that, in fact, it was unenforceable. In fact, a library card would suffice as identification for a person as they were presenting themselves. And at the time, other means of identification, such as state IDs, were easily obtained by transgender people as well for who they were presenting or as they were presenting. The transgender act of this felt that the obtaining official identification for how they were presenting themselves was inconsequential compared to the protections they were gaining in employment, housing, credit, and public accommodations for the ordinance. In addition, they felt that obtaining such official identification might protect them as well in some situations, in other situations in which an identity, in which identification might be necessary. Thus, at the last minute, the provision was added to the proposed ordinance, and the ordinance was subsequently passed by Chicago City Council in November 2002. In 2002, it was necessary to include this provision to obtain passage of the Gender Identity Ordinance. But in the 14 years since then, much has happened. For one thing, the state's Human Rights Ordinance has been revised to include gender identity, and therefore, as was cited earlier today, our ordinance is no longer in line with it. Also, in the 14 years since then, it is my understanding that there has not been a case in Chicago, and until just now, that I can go up nationally, our predators pitting themselves as a man or woman to obtain access to a restroom to prey on the opposite acts, especially on children. If there was such case behavior, it would be criminal, and a predator would be appropriately prosecuted. Also, since 2002, the issue of gender identity has become much more prevalent in society, and in fact, with younger people. And younger people would not have the ability, they wouldn't have the knowledge or the ability to obtain identification that the older individuals were able to do in 2002. So at this point, since time and evidence have shown that the provision is not necessary, I think it's time to remove it from the City of Chicago Human Rights Ordinance, and I applaud your efforts today for having this hearing on this issue.
Thank you very much. Any questions for this panel? Thank you very much for coming down. Our last panel for the day is Charle Nelly, Mark Wunder, Miles Brody, Joseph Benefort, Tracy Bane, and Michael O'Connor. Right here, in the front row. We'll start with Charle Nelly. Come on in.
I want to thank the committee for this hearing, and to the chairperson, and also to Commissioner Noriega for her leadership. I am Charle Nelly Ashmadar. I am the executive director of Rape Victim Advocates here in Chicago. We are an independent, not-for-profit organization dedicated to the healing and empowerment of sexual assault survivors through non-gymnical crisis intervention we have in place, individual and groups, and medical and legal advocacy in the greater Chicago metropolitan area. Since 1974, we provided a comprehensive range of rape crisis services in Chicago, including public education and institutional advocacy to improve the treatment of sexual assault survivors and to effect positive change in policies and public attitudes toward sexual assault. This past April, we joined over 250 organizations with a statement in support of full and equal access for the transgender community. It was the national consensus statement of anti-sexual assault and domestic violence organizations, and I would like to share some pieces of that statement. As organizations that care about reducing assault and violence, we favor laws and policies that protect transgender people from discrimination, including accessing facilities that match the gender they live every day. States across the country have introduced harmful legislation or initiatives that seek to repeal nondiscrimination protections or restrict transgender people's access to gender-specific facilities like restrooms. Those who are pushing these proposals have claimed that these proposals are necessary for public safety and to prevent sexual violence against women and children. In fact, we heard this argument from a panelist today. As rape crisis centers, shelters, and other service providers who work each and every day to meet the needs of all survivors and reduce sexual assault and domestic violence throughout society, we speak from experience and expertise when we state these claims are false. Despite the previous panelist's testimony, I want to emphasize that the issue in all of those cases was not that transgender persons had access to a bathroom congruent with their gender identity, or that someone pretending to be transgender accessed a bathroom and therefore violated a child. The issue was that there was a sexual predator who violated those children and committed violence. And the reality is that sexual predators exist in our communities every day, and they are actually less likely to be transgender and more likely to be cisgender males. And they are also more likely to be members of our families and our communities. So if we truly want to address the sexual predation against children, this is not going to do it for us. Transgender people already experience unconscionary high rates of sexual assault, and forcing them out of facilities consistent with the gender they live every day makes them vulnerable to assault. As advocates committed to ending sexual assault and domestic violence of every kind, we will never support any law or policy that could put anyone at greater risk for sexual harassment. And that is why we are able to strongly support transgender inclusive nondiscrimination protections, and why we oppose any law or policy that would jeopardize the safety of transgender people by forcing them into restrooms that do not align with the gender that they live every day. I would add also that there are many, many ways that the committee, as well as the city council, can address sexual violence that will actually have an impact, unlike policing who uses the bathroom. For example, adequately funding services for survivors of sexual violence in their loved ones, ensuring that public institutions have robust and relevant policies and procedures around sexual violence, that they practice those policies and procedures, and that they are consistently respectful of survivors of sexual violence. We are in support of this amendment to this ordinance, and we also welcome the committee and the city council's partnership in any initiatives to help support survivors of sexual violence and communicate an intolerance of sexual violence in our city, but that does not include discrimination against transgender people.
Thank you, Miles Brody. Miles Brody. Miles Brody.
Hello, my name is Miles, and I feel represented myself. I'm a transgender, two-spirit person, I think. In 1986, at the age of five, I came out as trans. With the love and support of my parents, they protected me, they gave me all the resources that I needed, and they showed me from a lot of what we heard today that trans kids don't exist. We do exist. And since a lot of people have been talking about safety that we had today, I would really love to address that. When I was in high school, times were extremely difficult for me, and not because I was trans, but because my parents went up there and explained to the schools that I was transgender. They were still trying to force me to use the women's restroom, locker room, and changing room. And I can see today, I'm loving those places. So that's why I'm thanking and pleading you all to believe a mend this, a city ordinance, so we can all be safe and great.
Thank you. Mr. Brody. Joseph Benefort.
Oh, Madam Chair, committee members, elected officials, and citizens. My name is Joseph Benefort. I am a father, son, a brother, and a business owner, born and bred in Chicago. I'm an active member in my community, specifically in the Wicker Park area, where my business, Benefort Realty, a full-service residential, commercial, real estate development company resides since 1996. I have always been dedicated to serving my community, and I've worked hard to build a strong reputation within it. I'm on the hospital board of Preston's West Town Community Leadership Board. I'm a member of the Wicker Park Bank and Achiever of Commerce as well. I have been in the local school council itself, with Bankton School, and I volunteer with an organization named Alfris Tapi, a great organization that provides housing to homeless on GPT unit. But most importantly, I am a proud father of two lovely children, Josh and Chloe. I am here before you as I was shocked to learn that a government-issued ID is required in the city of Chicago, this wonderful city that we live in. If asked to access a public accommodation in private nature, which just means showers and bathrooms, I might assume that none of you have ever been asked for an ID when you go to the bathroom, and frankly, there have I. But I am here to tell you that I feel it is a form of discrimination, harassment, I think that it is private in nature and humiliating to be judged as to whether or not someone fits a stereotype of what a man or a woman should look like. I support and wholeheartedly believe that people who live their identity should be allowed, should be allowed, to go into the bathroom according to their gender identity. It's the right thing to do. Many of you may know me, my work in real estate, as a businessman or as a parent, but you may not know or have recognized that I am transgender and have been since the age of 14. But actually, I didn't need to say that to you today, but because you would have never known that, however, I am compelled to share why I am. Not because of the issue of entering the bathroom. I am coming out because this is about the bigger issue of discrimination against the transgender community. I am coming out to you because I feel transgender people are being discriminated against in multiple ways, are being bullied, and I feel that discrimination is unjust, unfair, and unethical. Therefore, I kindly ask for your support in removing the requirement for a government-issued identification when entering the public bathrooms that are private in nature. I thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Michael O'Connor.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michael O'Connor. Many of you may know me because I've been, well, let me just say this, I've worked in different campaigns in this city for the last 30 years. I've worked on numerous campaigns politically as a native Chicagoan. My picture's now in the Hall of Fame, right down the street, as a gay and lesbian LGBTQ Hall of Fame. But most importantly, I'm a voice in the African-American community, specifically when it comes to LGBTQ rights on entities like 311 and V103. And I am, quite frankly, astounded and almost embarrassed to sit here from 2:00 to now, what, 1:00? Maybe, oh, maybe 3:00, dealing with washrooms and how they want to be cleaned. I mean, we're talking about equal access here. Do trans Chicagoans have equal access under the law? I don't have to show up a ID, and I'm openly gay man. Now, sooner or later, we're going to have to deal with, from a public policy perspective, with this amendment, because that's what this amendment is. It's a, it's a, a, a policy, hopefully, that will be amended to be inclusive of all Chicagoans. And I think at a time right now, when we're going through the changes that we're going through at Chicago, just down the South Street, right up in here, when budgets are out of line, the last thing we need to be dealing with is what is blatant discrimination against some Chicagoans. There is no scientific evidence that supports anyone who is, whose gender is different from what the government-issue marker says. We are, I don't understand how we're dealing with this. I don't understand why we have to go through this again, other than the fact that I do know that change is an ongoing situation, and that our freedom ain't free. I also understand that that does not just deal with the African-American response, because some of the people who have been in support of this amended proposal are African-American transgender persons. So I want to speak and add more diversity for those individuals who would assume that some type of way this is such an issue that our children are a danger. I looked that up here. Our children are more endangered by people shooting them in the streets than anybody going into a washroom. Any person from the LGBTQ community, most reports that deal with this in a scientific way will tell you that most metaphors are heterosexual. So the whole concept of somehow that our public safety and our children's public safety is endangered by people just going to the washroom is clearly, that is...
In most cases, what I am reporting on is the violence against the trans community, the bias against the trans community, and the difficulties that they face. And by having a law in place, some people said to me, "Well, when is this ever enforced?" But we know that when a law exists, and somebody who's, it's about, knows that it exists, it oppresses. And so if you think you're going to be policed, there is a psychological and a physical response to that that is very, very real. This is a health issue for people, and it's certainly, to me, an issue that Chicago should have resolved long ago, and we have a chance to make it right now. So I stand here in support of the trans community, in support of changing this ordinance to make it Chicago once again one of the best LGBTQ cities in the world.
Thank you very much for all of the panelists for your testimony this morning. Are there any questions from the committee?
I'm sure there's, I'm sure. I'd just like to firstly thank folks who are testifying here, not all of them testified today, but particularly those who have shown courage to talk about their, their struggle with their sexual identity and, and the courage to come and speak openly about it. I hope my colleagues listen to you, particularly those who express some skepticism about this ordinance, and I hope they're taking what, you know, the presence needs to, to assist in this. Thank you for coming out.
Yes, all the more.
Thank you, Karen. And just for the record, I think as a lot of my colleagues were speaking, and as I think that they were addressing the issue, I don't think anyone in this body even talked about anyone being transgender or gay being a danger. If this ordinance is passed, I think many people had a concern with what people said, and a lot of people said that maybe heterosexuals are more dangerous. And at this, at least what I see, this ordinance does not protect us against those heterosexuals that could be dangerous and are willing to identify falsely as transgender. And, and I think if, you know, whether this passed today, whether we hold it to, you know, address that issue, and how do we deal with that, I think that's something, you know, I think we need to deal with, because it's the fact that, as people here say it, not for transgender people, not for gay people, but probably some person that is heterosexual trying to misuse this law. And at this point, there's no comfort level, there's any protections against that, and I think that's what the general concern is.
Thank you, Alvin Moore. Tracy.
There was just a case at Ringby Field, for example, of a male-on-male predator abusing a child. That is illegal behavior, that needs, that person needs to be arrested and served time. This, whether, if a legal, if somebody does something that violates the law, regardless of their gender or the gender of the person that they victimize, that is illegal, I imagine. So we have laws that protect it, and as Charle Lealie eloquently said, we need to have more resources to provide for education and help for the survivors. Those are separate issues. But what we know is that there are many, many laws already in place that this would, this would replicate, and that is not an abusive act. So we do, we're not the first. So we have the benefit of knowing this has not been the case in other cities, towns, or anywhere else around the world that have implemented fair practices like this.
Interesting. I'd also like to add on to Tracy's statement that sadly, sexual abuse and minors occurs and occurs anywhere, not just exclusively in bathrooms, and included in, in churches, all over the world. Churches, he said, yeah, certain. So the bottom line is this, that if there are predators out there, and there are, sadly, gradually, they will, they will find their victims, and LZF, this ordinance is going to make it easier for them.
In closing, I just want to say that I'm hopeful that today the city of Chicago will join the 10 other states that have made the move that we're making today. I don't think that we should be policing bathrooms on the basis of gender identity. And I'm pleased that we had an opportunity this morning to discuss this, and I would like a motion to recommend to pass.
Chairman?
Yes.
I, I move that we recommend to pass this ordinance. There's an often cited quote from Martin Luther King, that "Our moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." This is just the latest step, the latest step in our journey to making life in this country more fair, more just, more equal for everyone. You know, I'm somewhat surprised by some of the concerns expressed by my colleagues today, because I don't mention that it happened. Now, we've gone back and done some easy research and read about all the parade of horribles that people expressed when we were proposing making accommodations open to people regardless of their, their race. I wish I had many, well, have a little time to research all the parade of horribles that people said would happen when we outlawed laws preventing interracial marriage. I wish I certainly can easily find all the parade of horribles that people said would happen when 30 years ago, this ordinance amended the Human Rights Ordinance to, the city council amended the Human Rights Ordinance to include protections for people on the basis that are forbidden to stripation and on the basis of sexual orientation. So this is just the next step, and every step of the way, the people who express those concerns look silly, and, and they were clearly not on the right side of history. And so I would urge everyone who's having some concerns about this ordinance to try to think, you know, think ahead, to try to be on the right side of history, and not be, and when your children and your grandchildren read the role of all of this vote today, the hope would be that they would be proud of your vote, and not embarrass their shame. So with that, I move that we recommend approval of this ordinance.
All right, since it is recommended and seconded by Alderman O'Farrell, all those in favor are signified by aye. Aye. The ayes have it. And I had to ask some of the names.
No, no, you have to, all opposed.
Ah, okay, all opposed.
Not all.
In the opinion of the chairs, the ayes have it. And the committee will point this out at city council on June 26th. I have a motion for a motion.
Go.
Thank you. Motion to impide Alvin Moore, all in favor. Aye.